All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 8th meeting of the Owletangji Local School District Board of Education. This year is flying by. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Ms. Schreiber?
Here.
All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda. All right, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, all right. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, for the board president's report, there was a time when we had very few people come to our board meetings. The last few times, we've had a whole lot of people. So we're always so excited to welcome members of the community to see the business that we're doing, to engage in really a productive conversation around our schools. We've got a good presentation tonight with some of our students, so that always helps as well. I especially want to recognize we have a number of elected officials in the room and always appreciate your partnership and thoughtfulness. One of the benefits of being at a school district that touches about 95 square miles is we have a whole lot of local partners to work with across four cities and seven townships. So it's always great to have other folks come in and be a part of the discussion. Over the past several meetings, we've really been talking about the state budget cycle and the impact that can come with public school funding through the state budget. We're going to continue to talk about that tonight, especially through Mr. Jenkins' report on the five-year forecast, so I don't want to belabor that point now. We'll talk a little bit about kind of how it's gone through the state and then what the impact on that is, you know, through, you know, to Owletangji itself. But one of the things that goes along with that is we always talk about the importance of funding public schools, but we don't always talk about, well, why? Why should you fund public schools? Why is that important? I think a lot of people up here can have a lot of different answers to that question, but I'll just give a couple of quick thoughts on it. Investment in public schools is an investment in the community, right? And it's specifically an investment in the community because it's an investment in every person in the community. I take no issue with private schools. I mean, they certainly have a place, but we as a public school have an obligation to educate every single person in our district who wants to come to our schools. And that's not a burden, it's a benefit, right? Because it shows that every person in our community has value. Everybody in our community has potential and the ability to grow, and that's what public schools provide. They give an opportunity for everyone to better themselves and to realize their potential and in turn, better their community. What an awesome thing that is, right? What an awesome thing that is. And so when we talk about funding those public schools, that's what we're doing. We're creating that opportunity. It doesn't matter how many dollars you have in your checkbook, it doesn't matter what conditions, or anything that might be exclusionary somewhere else. It's just that you have the interest in learning and that we want to provide that to you. One of the things that's especially important this particular week to think about that is when students come in the school, it isn't just self-executing, right? It's not just that they get that education just by being in the building. It takes a whole lot of people to make that a reality. And when public schools do that really, really well, you start to attract a lot of people who want to do that, and you see awesome results. So this week is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and it's a chance for us to recognize and celebrate the amazing work that all of the people in our school buildings do every single day. I grew up, you know, I'm a public school student all the way through, and I grew up thinking, man, I had a really great education. And then I come in and I go to curriculum nights or parent-teacher conferences and I'm blown away. I'm like, I want to take these classes now. I don't care if it's a sixth-grade class, I want to take this class like right now. And that's a testament to the amazing skill and ability that our teachers have, the care and dedication that they bring. But it's not just about teachers, right? It's about our bus drivers that greet students and make them feel safe the first thing in the morning and the last thing at the end of the day. It's about our intervention aides who are there helping students get past, you know, maybe a challenge that they have and helping them feel more included. And it's our mental health staff that help them, you know, deal with maybe a crisis that they're having or just a challenge that they're facing on a day-to-day basis, and so many more people, from our maintenance staff to every level of the organization. It is a true honor to be a member of a board for a school district that does so many things right here. And it's how, it's a testament to why we should fund these public schools, because that's what happens in public school. This amazing work is what happens when you fund a school well and you allow, you know, people to flourish, right? So that's, it's just so powerful to me. I realize that I'm talking in very, very high levels of generalities, but what I thought for this particular week would be a good, good way to distill it down is to give one individual story. So I was speaking with Ms. Schreiber the other day, we got a letter actually just today from a parent who has a very personal story about all this, so we thought it might be a good opportunity to recognize that. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Schreiber.
Thank you, yes. This was a result of a conversation I had with a friend of mine. We both have graduating fifth graders this year, and she expressed to me a couple of weeks ago that she wanted to really recognize the entire community that came together to help educate her one child and what it takes to do that. And she said that the teachers told her the best thing she could do was write a letter to the school board, and when I read this letter and read everything that she had to say about her teachers, I thought that this needed to be shared at our meeting. It really shows how everybody in a single school works together as a team to focus on an individual student, their needs and their health, physical, mental, and love of learning. So I would like to share this, and I'm not editing this in any way except to take her name out for anonymity's sake, but... Dear Mr. Lester and members of the Owletangji Local School Board, I am writing during Teacher Appreciation Week to express my profound gratitude for the exceptional staff at Oak Creek Elementary. In a time when public and special education face increased scrutiny, I want to share our family's experience as living proof that public educators make an immeasurable impact on their students through evidence-based instruction, ongoing professional development, and most importantly, the meaningful relationships they cultivate with their students. My daughter is currently a fifth-grade student at Oak Creek and has been part of the school community since kindergarten. Before enrolling, she spent three years in early childhood education placements. At her kindergarten assessment, she was unable to identify a single letter and instead used humor and distraction to cope with what she didn't know. Her kindergarten year was further impacted by COVID-19 closures. Winter assessments that year, prior to COVID-19, identified her as high-risk in early literacy and math, with a national percentile of 3 in reading and 20 in math. During the summer of 2020, we pursued a private evaluation hoping to better understand and support her learning needs. She was diagnosed with dyslexia, ADHD, and learning disabilities in reading, writing, and math. Naturally, we were concerned about what her educational future might hold. We need not have worried. The staff at Oak Creek responded immediately and supportively. During her first-grade year, which we chose to do online, her teacher Maggie Davis was extraordinary, creative, nurturing, and unwavering in her commitment to engaging instruction. Her intervention specialist Betsy Adair worked tirelessly and inventively to support her growth. In second grade, Allison Green and Ashley Camboni continued to guide her development. By the end of that year, she was assessed as only low-risk in reading and math, and she even qualified as gifted in science through the Terranova Assessments, making her a twice exceptional learner. Third grade brought challenges, including confidence issues and difficulties with medication that left her withdrawn. Her teacher, Mr. Roy Jacobson, and intervention specialist Ms. Brittany Burga were instrumental in rebuilding her confidence. Ms. Burga worked with her to understand her thinking differences as a neurodivergent learner and to embrace her creativity, out-of-the-box problem-solving, and incredible understanding of how to best utilize assistive technology to show what she knows. Their belief in her made a lasting impact, and she ended the year with composite national percentile scores of 72 in reading and 42 in math. In fourth grade, she faced bullying and emotional setbacks. Her team, Mrs. Kathy Wyland, Mrs. Amy Romano, and Mrs. Elizabeth Pazek, along with incredible intervention specialists Maggie Starman and Jane Wright, surrounded her with care and advocacy. With their support, she experienced tremendous academic growth, including 215 points of progress on district assessments. She began additional Orton-Gillingham instruction with Mrs. Vidushi Dave and ended the year with national percentiles of 81 in reading and 62 in math. She no longer needed IEP goals in math, and reading was close behind. Her fifth-grade year has been a breeze after so many years of dedicated educators working with our daughter. Confident and flourishing, she is supported by her classroom team, Mr. Doug Campbell, Mrs. Megan Foster, and Mrs. Jenna Houseworth, and again by the remarkable Jane Wright, whom she lovingly calls her "school mom." She now reads independently for pleasure and exudes the confidence of a child who knows she is loved and valued. This year, she also participated in the Rocks program, building meaningful connections with our school social worker Tessa Hannah and mental health specialist Amanda Caporal. Her winter assessment scores reached a national percentile of 84 in reading and 81 in math, a truly remarkable transformation from where she began with her score of 3 in reading. She now only has IEP goals in writing and executive functioning. In just a few weeks, our daughter will complete her journey at Oak Creek. She is our youngest child, and with her graduation, we say goodbye to a school community that has meant so much to our family. It's emotional to reflect on the tremendous growth she has experienced, not just academically, but as a whole person. Oak Creek did not merely teach our daughter, they empowered her, nurtured her, and believed in her every step of the way. She leaves us a confident, capable, and self-assured learner, ready for middle school. Every educator she encountered not only upheld the Owletangji mission of maximizing learning for every student, but also left a lifelong impact on her journey. To those who doubt the power or effectiveness of public education, I can say with full conviction they have never attended Oak Creek Elementary.
That's what it's all about, right? I mean, and that's why we talk about the power and the importance of funding public schools. So, yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I want to thank, you know, my friend as well for sharing that and feeling comfortable with sharing her child's journey, and I think that's just one of many amazing stories that are present in our district and I think truly reflects how an entire school comes together, an entire team of teachers, intervention specialists, every single person that child comes in contact with affect our students' education, and we can't just distill things down to reading, writing, math. It's the whole person, and that's what really helped her and many of our own students flourish as learners and people.
Great. All right. It's going to be...
Yeah, go ahead. Couple notes. A committee thing I'll mention last, I want to echo your comments about teachers. We have past and present association leaders here had the privilege to go with Mr. Meyer and Mr. Jenkins to one of our schools over spring break, and believe it or not, I kept my comments very short, and I just said that I view my role on the board as to move mountains to take away all the barriers because they're amazing at what they do. That's not the only person that's had that type of experience, and I'm just thankful they wrote the letter. So I want to acknowledge all of our educators, and that means people that serve our kids' lunch, people that help them individually because they have unique needs. You touched my kids, and you've made a huge difference. My son, who doesn't want to talk to anybody on the planet, is doing a lesson on Monday to first-grade students, teaching them a Spanish lesson for 45 minutes, and that's perfect because he needs to do that. My daughter feels confident in math for the first time in her life. So it's not just anonymous kids, it's our kids, because we all have kids up here who have these victories. So I'm thankful for our teachers, and that's everybody who teaches, because you teach kids how to be humans, you teach them how to be kind. As our kindergarten teachers will tell us, they put "kind" in kindergarten. So just so thankful for you and what you do, and thankful to go visit a couple of teachers over spring break. Facilities meeting, I won't steal Mr. Gordon's thunder either now or in future meetings. It was a great meeting, almost talked exclusively about Shanahan, and I'm just so thankful we have facilities folks here tonight that volunteer their time and help us to be the best we can for every school. So I appreciate what our facilities folks do. It was a great meeting and great conversations. We are so blessed to have Jeff Gordon leading that effort in our district, so that's what I've gotten.
Yeah, for sure. All right, any other committee updates, other OSBA stuff?
I attended the OSBA Board Leadership Institute this past week, last Friday and Saturday, so just another opportunity to, you know, kind of add to my professional skill set as a board member and be with those from around the state, because no two districts look the same. And I would actually, a little shout-out to Mrs. Julie Fiesel was there presenting on behalf of COSBA and talking about advocacy, which was a wonderful presentation, and our former principal, Todd Spinner, was talking about culture and climate, and it was an interesting presentation because here, of course, he opened a building, and it was interesting to hear when you go to a new district that has a lot of established tradition, how you come in and shake things up. So it was, it was great to see some familiar Owletangji faces or past faces there as well.
Okay. Well, I know we have some students here that are missing part of a soccer game to come present, so we are going to jump straight to our next presentation, or our first presentation, which is From Passion to Profession: Middle School Iki Guy Project. So welcome all the teachers and students to come on up and present. This is, this is going to be a treat.
They're a little nervous, but I taught them they're going to do fabulous. And I'm Mrs. Brooks, and this is my teaching partner.
I'm Megan Walker, one of the gifted coordinators at Owletangji Berlin Middle School. So we wanted to share sort of what we've been doing with our gifted, during our academic assist time. This year, we, during our leadership components, when we were at BLT, we did the Iki Guy. Vince kind of shared some of the foundational things, and the components of Iki Guy are really that it is a compound word, and we went through this process with the kids. So we kind of broke it down during the academic assist times. We did like portions of this, this was over like a few-month span. But we also did this with the staff members, and then during the fall conference nights, we actually had our parents do it as well, and then they got to see their Iki Guys for their kiddos. So that was kind of a fun process. Once we finished the Iki Guy kind of breaking down each component, and then they got to the root of their word in the center, which is really essentially kind of their passion or purpose. And we did a thinking routine from there, from Project Zero, called CSI, and so the kids broke down their word, and then they created a sticker, and we made those in our Makerspace at Berlin. So from the sticker, this is sort of what transpired.
During our seminar, we talked about one of my childhood friends. When I was in third grade, he told me what his job was going to be was that he was going to fish and watch birds all day. He told me this from third grade all the way up to middle school, all the way up to high school, and what I didn't really understand was why my dad sent us to college together. So here we are in the chemistry lab, and he's telling me again, Denise, for real, I want to, for my job, to fish and watch birds all day. And I said, oh, Johnny, can you please just walk across the street? Across the street was an Environment Protection Agency. He ended up getting an internship in which he was looking at water control and the lakes and in the streams and in the ponds and everywhere. And so then we kind of parted ways, because I went into social work and he went into fishing or, you know, quality control, chemistry. So my sister, two years ago, sent me a video, and he says, look, look at what happened. This is Johnny Metcalf, and his job is he fishes and he watches birds all day. He works at the Orlando Airport, and what he does is he makes sure that the birds do not fly into the airplanes because that causes a lot of problems. So he was able to take his passion, turn it into a profession, even though, and I explained to the children, everyone laughed at him. I didn't laugh at him because I was like, this kind of sounds interesting, so I just followed him. And so he's doing very well. He's the vice president, he's working at Orlando Airport, and we wanted to make sure during this project that kids realize that maybe their job has not been created yet. Maybe it's something that they're going to create, and he is saving lives by doing what he's doing, looking and making sure that the wildlife, that they don't interact with the airplane. And so in Owletangji, we also told them that the course selection, once you know what's in the middle of your Iki Guy, then you can take courses to see if that's what you want and that you can always adjust things.
So from the initial Iki Guy, we partnered with Molly Preston and had OSU Clinical Research Visit. So that was from the kids' Iki Guys. We sort of grouped them into categories so that we could start exploring careers during the academic assist time. Some say that, you know, middle school might be a little too soon to start thinking about these things, but we feel that this is really what our purpose is, and Denise and I both kind of have a passion with helping kids figure out where their paths are going to go. So Jessica Fritter from OSU came and spoke to the kiddos just about opportunities within the medical career field with a clinical research component. And a lot of our kiddos that obviously think they just want to be a doctor didn't really know that this existed. So we were super excited about that partnership, and then we'll kind of get into what we're going to be doing with that later, but we want you to hear from the kiddos and their experience with their Iki Guys.
Hi, my name is Adia Arun. I hope everybody's doing good today. I'd like to present my personal Iki Guy experience. So when I personally did the Iki Guy for the first time, I did not know what it was, and I didn't really understand the significance, but as I went through the activity, I did really understand that how it helped identify my personal passions, which was something I was struggling with at the time. Those passions really helped me, like, they understood what my core things were, what I could specialize in, which later in turn would help me in future operations such as figuring out what my career is, which is obviously something that the average middle schooler thinks about. Careers, for me, honestly, it's a very exploratory thing, as I've written many things about reading, literature, and other things. I realized the significance of the relation between the two, as I could use writing for many things, such as journalism or bringing light to many of the problems in the world, and such as therapeutic advice, or I could just talk about many problems in the world. I believe that my personal progress was displayed on the Iki Guy, because I do believe that if I were to do this activity again, I would not put the same results as I have changed over the course of this couple of months, and this experience has shown me that this, this, this activity clearly represents your identity and it helps you clearly define your future path.
My name is Anbu, and I'm a seventh grader at Owletangji Berlin Middle School. So like Adia, I had no idea what this Iki Guy was meant for and how do you even do it? But over the course, I started wanting to be a mathematician because I was really good at math and I liked it. But then, the Iki Guy, like, it wasn't really a profession that would help you sustain in life, so I needed to find a different profession. So then I went into, so then I decided to go into a medical field because I also really like science. So then I was like one of the kids who thought doctor was the only profession in medical. But then when the clinical researcher came, it like showed me that there's more than just a doctor in the medical field. You can actually do both at the same time, and you can help as many people as possible. So the Iki Guy just really helped me think about my path in life and how I've definitely changed over the course of the gifted seminars. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Easton, and like everyone before me and probably after me, I didn't know what Iki Guy was or like what it would turn out to be. But the Iki Guy made my life more organized by sorting out the stuff I love and the things I need to work on. The Iki Guy also helped me see that soccer isn't a job that I can get paid for. It's what I love. And the Iki Guy, or school can also help me excel in soccer by, by teaching me to look at different angles and to get up when I get knocked down.
I'm a sixth grader at Berlin. I really love helping people and trying to benefit others in the best way I can, and doing the Iki Guy Project, I realized that I can do that in a job that I would love to do. And the path that I chose, it really, it's going to help me a lot with deciding which classes I want to focus more on, the subjects and the clubs I participate in more. I think it's going to like guide my learning by helping me decide which subjects I'm going to focus more in and direct my time into. What I was really surprised in by this was how much I changed, because in the beginning, I really thought being a doctor was the only medical path that I could choose, but then at the end, I realized that I really wanted to be a physical therapist because I put together what I really wanted to do by helping people with their health and fitness and also with how, like, improving from injuries, so.
Hi, my name is Faith Throm. I'm a sixth-grade student from Berlin Middle School. When I was younger, I loved to draw and paint and turn anything I could get my hands on into art, basically. I always thought I would want to be like a painter or sculptor or something artistic. When I did the Iki Guy, I realized that my deepest passion is to be like a graphic organizer. This like, this helped me to come to the conclusion that I can do what I love to do as a career path to help others.
Hi, I'm Kami Jacoby, and I'm a sixth grader at Berlin Middle School. Similar to Faith, I always wanted to do something that had to do with art, because my entire life, I had always been told I was a very creative person. During the Iki Guy Project, I had realized that I wanted to do something that also interacted with science and anything that had to do with math and technology. Because of this, I decided that I want to do anything that had to do with engineering or design, and so I wanted to become an engineer. The Iki Guy Project helped me discover what I wanted to do and helped me lean towards the things that I love. Overall, I really love the project, and it really helps me understand who I am a little bit more.
Okay, so what's next for this? Obviously, we have the sixth graders for a few more years with us, and the seventh grade for another year, so we're going to kind of build off of the Iki Guy. Obviously, you saw the vast array of sort of like, and the complexity of some of their interests, so we are going to partner with the Columbus Museum of Art next year, as well as JP Morgan Chase and the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium. So we're really excited to see kind of where this goes. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Me first?
Yeah.
I'm all excited. Nora, I saw my physical therapist today. There's a great need for physical therapists. I think you make a great one. And to all of you who said that you didn't know, you know, you really weren't sure what the Iki Guy was at first until you embarked upon it, in a spirit of transparency, when the curriculum department presented on Iki Guy several meetings ago, I thought they were talking about a guy who was, you know, icky, an icky, icky guy, I don't know. So they, they helped clarify, but you explaining your process and going through this and also adding the meaning of how this is guiding you in your path for the future was incredibly helpful for me personally, so thank you.
Wow, and you guys are awesome public speakers, right? There's a room full of people, there's not a lot of sixth graders that are just, you know, naturally come up and just speak to everybody, and you guys did great. You were thoughtful and organized, that's going to serve you really well. That's going to serve you really well. I just want to know, I mean, we've talked about this a few times about just sort of career planning, a lot of the work we do with the Bridge Ed program and all sorts of things like that. The goal is not to tell students, you know, in 6th grade, this is what your path is, you can never deviate from it. It's to encourage that thoughtfulness and that creativity to start thinking about it, to think about what you love. There are a lot of people that get to college like, I don't know what I want to do, I'm not sure. And then they sort of flounder for a while, right? So it's just getting more in tune with who you are and what's important to you and get that thoughtfulness going. So it's amazing that you as teachers are being able to share that with the students. It's amazing you guys are starting to internalize that and keep thinking, keep being creative, keep following your passions. That's, that's really an amazing thing. So thank you all so much. So you are free to stay for the rest of the board meeting if you want. You don't have to. I know that a couple of you mentioned you have soccer games that you want to get out here, so you're free to go now if you want to. I have to show them that, but thank you so much.
To Mr. Meyer and the superintendent's report.
Now we can see everybody that came behind.
Ms. Brooks and Ms. Walker, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. More to celebrate. As I've said many times, the end of the year is one of my favorite times of the year because we have a lot to celebrate here. So that was on display this past Monday for our district senior awards and scholarship night. Just seems every year it gets bigger and bigger. So Monday night, we recognized 173 seniors across all four of our high schools who received 80 scholarships and awards during the annual celebration. So it's really nice because we're able to bring our community together for one event and recognize the wonderful accomplishments of so many of our seniors on that night. But you know, my takeaway really is, and I just love hearing some of the stories that are behind some of the scholarships, some of the, especially the memorial scholarships and the legacy that these families are leaving and the impact moving forward that they're having with our students. So great night and again, want to congratulate all of the seniors and of course their families for the recognition this past Monday. Also, end of the school year, we across the district get to showcase the tremendous talent that we have in the arts program at all levels from across the school districts. So I had the privilege to attend three of our high school art shows and then one of our elementary art shows as well. So I just want to point out a couple of things that were, that takeaways that I had from some of the schools. But you know, number one, we have some very, very talented students. Number two, the opportunities that we provide for our kids in the arts is amazing. You could almost in the high school carve out a major in art if, if our students so choose to set themselves up for the future. But you know, one of the cool projects right there in the top left there. So this is a project, this is a Pen Pals scaffolding image project. So it started with students in 1st grade at Liberty Tree Elementary School. So the class had a very special opportunity to partner with older students on collaborative artwork called Pen Pals. So this is Mrs. Vitale's 1st grade, 1st grade class, the students devised a character. So after they devised the character, they passed this on to the middle school. So they passed it on to middle, middle schoolers at Hyatt's Middle School who created context around the character. And then once they were done, they passed it on to the high school, to Liberty High School, who added the composition and finished the artwork. And so that's the finished, those are some of the examples of the finished product. So again, just collaboration between from 1st grade to the middle school to the, to the high school. So I thought that was really, really cool in the, in our arts.
So we went to the Liberty Tree Art Show. We got these very nice personalized invitations from students from Mr. Jervich's class. It was from 6 to 8. I got there at 5:55. There were already like 250 people in that building. I mean, it was amazing to see the people showing up. And that's a true testament to Mr. Jervich and just the, the community he's created.
Yeah, and just the support that our community provides in things like this that we do in our schools. And I was there at the same time you were too, and yeah, it was packed. And it was a very creative for Mr. Jervich to work with his students to write all of the board members as well as district leadership team. So I, I had a personalized note from Maddie who wanted me to look at her birdhouse, which I did and I have a picture of it. And I'm going to send her, I'm sending her a note back next week through Mr. Jervich. So it was a great night.
Mr. Meyer, can you go back to that slide?
Absolutely.
So my thought is, it's Friday night and I'm like, there is no way I'm going anywhere except to the couch on a Friday night. I'm exhausted. But we get this note from Mason and he says, will you please join us? Of course, we're going to be there, Mason, of course. Well, everybody else had the same idea because there, you could not really, I mean, it was tight. It was tight. And I thought, well, I'll just take a quick peek and get moving. You couldn't because all of the different, I don't know, themes or whatever you would call it, they were unbelievable.
The school was filled with art all around the school.
And they're integrating different subjects, math, science, literature, all with their art. And it was really, really cool. And I'm thankful for the invitation from Mason. So please, I need, just need to know who I thank for that because I don't know.
So Mr. Jervich is the art teacher there at Liberty Tree. So if you want to send a personalized thank you to him and to Mason, because that's what I'm going to do with Maddie, but yeah, you can send it to me and I'll make sure he gets it. Yeah, thank you. Also, this is a big deal, you know, I don't know, lately we're winning a lot of championships around here, but this is really special too. So Owletangji High School DECA student, Anya, first place. So this is world first place. So of course, we hear about OCC champs, we hear about district champs, state champs. But, and, and I know this because I used to be a former marketing DECA teacher. And this is a big deal when you go to the national world competition and there are thousands of kids from literally all over the world competing. So first time ever, so Anya took first place in her project management business solutions event. So this is, and it's really grueling on how you go through this competition. So congratulations to her. She actually teamed up with Optimized Integrative Health to identify an issue within their business. She conducted interviews, did her research, she built a website, created social media platforms and completed the first two months of all marketing communications and promotional activities for them. And then obviously, this was her project that she went to present at the state level and the national level. So world champion. So congratulations. Also want to highlight, I have Mr. Board Member O'Brien. We made sure we captured a picture of you. So this is a culmination, this is from Orange High School, so CP English, 12 students. And it's called Orange Senior Experience Showcase. So they work individually or in groups to select the topic that they're interested in and do the research and then presented here, it was actually right upstairs to district administrators. And again, just walking around and, and talking to the kids, it's just like, wow. And how passionate they were about their topics and how well they worked collaboratively and the solutions that they came up with relative to their topics. It was just, again, that's why we do what we do and we've heard a lot of that tonight. But it was just a, just a great morning for me actually to get to interact and engage with students from Orange High School.
Yeah, no, it was, it was great. I mean, and the topics ranged from anything from, you know, coaching and one of them's called the Ted Lasso Effect. It was really good.
That's right.
So it was, and the kids had a lot of passion, you know, for the content. So it was really good to listen to.
Yeah, and, and some, and they were, a couple of them weaved in mental health and anxiety and how just as students, how they can work through that and manage. And then also even moving on from high school to the next level, whatever they're choosing to do. So, so that, that was fun. So as Mr. Lester said, this week is staff appreciation week. And again, I just want to reiterate, we, we just don't celebrate staff May 5th through the 9th. We celebrate staff in this district every single day because with over 3,000 employees, we have tremendous individuals in this organization who show up every day to put their best forward, to help all of our kids and really drill down to the individual level of each student. And you know, that's what I'm so proud about in this district. You know, I've been here since 2007 and that's how people show up every day. So again, whether you're a classroom teacher, a guidance counselor, food service, a bus driver, mechanic, custodian, aide, administrator, it shows in, in what we do here. So I just want to read, this, this was one of our teachers who teaches science over at Orange High School and after this day, this is a post that she had on her social media, her personal social media, and we asked her if we could read this tonight. And then we're going to show this quick video. So Jamie Gilbert, she's a science teacher at Orange High School. So this is her post. "I'm super tired and emotional tonight because today was the AP Bio test. Seems silly, but it's my academic version of a national meet." So obviously, her kids took the AP Bio test and she teaches AP Bio. "This video reminded me that I work with some of the best admins, educators, coaches, and staff that exist. It also reminded me how grateful I am for my family, who gives so much to let me give everything to other people's children. My own children understand how much it means to me to be there for others. Thank you." And again, our, that's how our people show up every day. So we're going to, 3 minutes, you want to play the video there?[1320.75] every day. So we're going to, three minutes, you want to play the video there? Again, just thank you to our tremendous staff for all of the work that they do and thanks to the communications team for putting that together. We send out what we call pos up surveys to all of our schools throughout the year. And again, we talk a lot about student voice, staff voice, but also collect feedback from our parents and the experiences that they're having in our schools. So, all right, superintendent action items. So we have, congratulations to Amy Jenny. So we're promoting Amy from teacher to pupil services supervisor. So she's on the agenda tonight. And then we have some retirements and we have a special guest here, which I'll get to in a minute. So Mary Buckingham, Cynthia Flanagan, Julie Hoy, and Michael McDaniels. And I always say this, so between the four of them, 65 years of service to Olentangy Schools, but we do have a special guest and we prepared some remarks. So I want to read these about Mary Ellen Buckingham is sitting right here, who is a valued employee of Olentangy Schools. So tonight, we recognize Mary Ellen Buckingham, a longtime employee and district resident who is retiring at the conclusion of this school year. Mary Ellen has served in the food service department for 21 years as a food service worker at Shanahan Middle School and have impacted thousands of lives during those 21 years. She has loved greeting so many of our students, now alumni, over the years. Mary Ellen is a family member to many longtime employees and pillars of our community. Uncles William and Harold McNamara served on our school boards and cousins Bill, Dan, and Uncle Tim were all bus drivers from the 1950s through the 70s. So two of her uncles sat in those seats as school board members and of course, family bus drivers. Mary Ellen was also part of the graduating class of 1954. So 41 seniors comprised the first graduating class of Olentangy High School. And we met a couple of weeks ago and we talked for about an hour and just, she still has a sharp mind and gave us some really, really good stories about her time in high school. So these seniors came together from four local schools, Powell, Berlin, Orange, and Hyatt's to form the newly minted Olentangy High School. As I recently read the 1954 Golden Arrow, the school's yearbook, and reflect on their history, I am struck by how many things remain consistent here in Olentangy. The classmates had to all get to know each other, figure out their new building, and get to the business of learning. That did not get in the way of a few social activities, including dances, selling concessions at games, and even, even selling fire extinguishers as fundraisers. So we still do fundraisers today. I don't think we're selling fire extinguishers, but we do a lot of fundraisers. While our senior classes are so much bigger these days, it's hard to imagine similarities, but there truly are so many themes and connections from prom to National Honor Society celebrations to a memorable graduation ceremony. It's good to know some of these important milestones remain constant. During this staff appreciation week, it's important to highlight other important traits that make Olentangy special, and that is people like you, Mary Ellen. In 2018, our convocation speaker, art teacher, Jonathan Juravich, who we've talked to, he's talked about tonight, he's the Liberty Tree art teacher, spoke about Mary Ellen as one of the unsung heroes in our district. And I talk a lot about unsung heroes, so people behind the scenes that show up every day and make the operation smooth to make sure that we're providing the best environment for our kids. And so I say that all the time, but same thing, unsung heroes, and this is what he said. After thinking about this, who are our unsung heroes? The person that came to mind is Mary Ellen Buckingham. She is a four-hour food service employee at Shanahan Middle School. Her job responsibility is cashiering during lunch service. What makes Mary Ellen so special is her relationships with the students at Shanahan Middle School. She takes a vested interest in what is going on in their lives. She goes above and beyond to attend school events, including music programs, sporting events, and anything else a student might ask her to attend. She treats every student like they are one of her own. So thank you, Mary Ellen, for being such, for being one of our staff members that has made such a big difference and demonstrated how special our one Olentangy family has been through the years. So congratulations to you on your retirement. Thank you for your service. And we're proud to present you with this lifetime pass to attend Olentangy School events for years to come. Also want to, I know, so Ms. Eddy, thank you for bringing her tonight, bringing Mary Ellen and Ms. Leonard for showing up to support. Really appreciate it. So again, one of many, many staff members that we just have that make, and Mr. Lester said it perfectly, or in the letter, the impact that staff members have on kids. And thank you for the impact that you've had on, again, thousands of kids over the years. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so just a few other business items. We have recommended approval of students for early graduation, believe it or not. We have a few students graduating early. We have one correction from the fees from the last meeting, middle school strength correction. Recommend, this is a standing item every year, approval of resolution authorizing continued membership in Ohio High School Athletic Association with our middle schools and high schools. And then a business management facilities item, approval of a contract with McHugh Construction in the amount of 154,376 for restroom renovations at Shanahan Middle School, which is also a discussion item that Mr. Gordon will discuss here shortly. So any questions?
Give one more slide still.
Oh, yeah. Well, before you have any questions, important dates coming up, test drive a bus hiring event and again, Sunday, May 18th commencement at the Shot and Scene Center. I do want to again, put the public service announcement, we will for the first time ever be streaming, well, not ever, because I think we did it during COVID, but we're streaming graduations this year, from the shot. We will be streaming graduation, all four graduations. All that information is located on our website and of course, the high school principals will also send that information out. Teacher Work Day, Friday, May 23rd. Our next Board of Education meeting will be right here on May 21st at 6:30. Any questions? Now, any questions, before I turn it over to Mr. Jenkins?
Ms. Buckingham, thank you so much for, thank you so much for coming here for all your years of service. It's just a true testament to what makes this district great is that spirit of supporting others and caring for others. So truly, truly thank you for all that you've done. We appreciate it. I know Ms. Eddy asked if it's okay to leave after this.
As a Shanahan parent, I also want to thank you personally. I know my daughter loves buying lunch, which she did not in elementary school, so. Yeah. And you're just part of the Shanahan culture that I know is so wonderful and supportive throughout all different.
All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening, board members, members of the community who are here this evening. The five-year forecast is something that we do twice a year. It's essentially submitted in November as kind of the official, and then there's an update that's done in May. I think it's a very worthwhile exercise. It makes us be forward-thinking to have a five-year forecast and to plan ahead for that length of time, really makes you analyze a lot of things that go into whether a school district can continue to meet its educational and programmatic needs. But before we get to the big presentation, I will go over some very brief items. We don't have many tonight. Recommendation of approval of the board meeting minutes. This will be a part of a very, very brief consent agenda. So if there are no questions about what will be there, I'll in earnest begin the five-year forecast presentation. So I tried to distill about a 45 to 46-page report down to key highlights. And how I like to think about the five-year forecast presentation is we want to look at our principal revenues. And as a district, we're talking real estate revenues. But we also want to talk about how important state funding is to the district. And we'll get into some of the whys. And specifically tonight, we're going to look at a couple of iterations, the as-introduced budget from Governor Dewine's administration and juxtapose that against the amended House Bill 96. We look at the expenditure side, which for us is almost completely and totally personnel services, so salaries and benefits. And then we would be remiss if we did not talk about the growth that we have to plan for in our five-year forecast. And then a new twist this year, there's always something interesting that happens in a budget bill. And this year's interesting is the clawback. And we want to talk about it and specifically how it impacts our school district. So on our first slide here, first slide in earnest, what I'm trying to do is to portray that our mix of funding is kind of the, you know, I guess cumulative bar charts that you see that show how our funding is broken down in 24 and 25, beg your pardon, 24 versus 29, kind of one-year historical in the forecast and five years out. What you'll notice is that we have been and will remain principally funded by local tax levies. In fact, if you kind of do the math there, local tax levies, including public utility, a lot of folks don't realize that there is a marginal amount of property in the district, railroad tracks, underground gas lines, the utility companies have tangible personal property, not even close to the amount of real estate. But when you look at local taxes, it's 83% of our revenue. With the impact of House Bill 920, though, and tax reduction factors, our revenue growth for levies will always be constrained because we're above the 20 mil floor. And essentially what that means is as valuations increase, it is contrary to what most people immediately think, which is your tax revenue must be going through the roof. But because we are above the 20 mil floor, our tax rates are reduced commensurately so that we do not get any additional revenue off of voted levies for existing properties. So we're projected to remain above the 20 mil floor into the near future. And that does put a damper on how fast revenue grows. So how fast is revenue forecasted to grow? Well, in this five-year cycle, our average year-over-year works out to about 1.49%. Now, there's a year, especially in 2026, where one might wonder why it goes negative. And that's because of right now, the forecasted state funding. With the as-introduced bill, which is much closer to what's in existing law, we actually would lose state funding next year, and that is impactful to the district. But we do have an overall blend of 1.5%. The spike in 2021 and 2022, again, is indicative of our story. That is the last time we passed an operating levy. Our revenues would have increased appreciably in '21 and '22 because we passed a levy in May of 2020 that would have been collected during fiscal years '21 and fiscal years '22. And we've now ramped up and reached that level. And that's why you see things cool down. If you wonder what happened in 2024, the state of Ohio, with its funding formula, actually increased cost sets from 2018 and went four years forward to 2022. So what they did for the district in the 24-25 budget was actually very helpful. But that also cools off because those cost sets were frozen at 2022, also for the 24-25 school year. And that's why you see this year's revenue is only increasing about 2.38%. We talked earlier about 83% funded by local tax revenue. We also talked about what happens with tax rates as values increase. We are above the 20 mil floor. This means that when values go up, tax rates go down. As an example, for the 2022 tax year, which is paid in 2023, our operating mills, not all mills, but our operating mills were 47.45. For the 2024 tax year, which will be paid now in 2025, in fact, second half 24-25, pay 25 tax bills will be coming out here in late June or July, for 2024, the millage is only 36.81. That is a 22.4% decrease in our tax rates that offset, I'm sure what everybody knows happened in 2023, which was a roughly 30 to 32% increase in values. While individual homes at the micro level may have had decreases, believe it or not, or increases, depending on how fast their particular property appreciated with respect to the countywide and specifically our district-wide average, as a district, that calculation of a decrease of 22.4% on our millage makes sure, and this was law passed in the late 1970s, House Bill 920, that we do not get a windfall of additional revenue without a vote of our constituents. Property tax payments in the state of Ohio for the property tax owner are something that I think, it's a good thing, that in the late 1970s, it was set up that you can't just have taxes increase just because your values do. There must be a vote and there must be a willful choice for those tax rates to increase in a way that causes aggregate tax collections for a government entity to increase.
Mr. James, I just want to highlight that point because I think it's important for people to understand. The amount of money that we got year over year is staying the same. It's what percentage of that each individual person pays changes with the reevaluation. So, you know, I may, let's say the district got $100 and before I paid $1 out of that, maybe after the reevaluation, I'm paying $1.25 or maybe I'm paying 75 cents, but the district is still only getting $100.
That's correct. The stated goal of a reappraisal or a triennial update, right in the Ohio Revised Code, is a reapportionment to recognize how property values have changed. To use a Latin term, the property taxes are ad valorem. It sounds fancy. It just means a portion of. So if property taxes are going to be a portion of the value of a home, then all property owners should be interested in periodically realizing and understanding that their property is not being inordinately taxed versus other properties that may be worth much, much more. And so that is the stated goal. And the easiest way to think about it, Mr. Lester, is kind of what you just said. Imagine a pie. I get a piece of the pie, and if you change the size of my piece, you're impacting everyone else's. That's what happens with property tax rate rollbacks. The pie really doesn't change in size. The size of each person's piece of pie, or what they pay, is what changes. So, go ahead.
And so it works both ways. In a stress scenario, in valuations crater, the millage goes up.
That is correct.
Right. And property taxes, property owners, like myself, we don't like it either way, but it's the way the mechanics work.
That's correct.
We raise a dollar amount and the rate floats.
That's correct. Yep. There's always a calculation that the auditor does every year that essentially says, what do I have to do with the tax rates so that the amount of collections and taxes on existing properties stays roughly the same? And that's exactly the math. It's just algebra. They just back into the number.
So some districts do benefit from reappraisals?
Some districts benefit from reappraisals when they hit the 20 mil floor. That is correct.
But not us?
That is correct.
So why don't we just reduce and just go to the 20 mil floor in Olentangy? Wouldn't the state come in then and just supplement what we want to do?
No, no. When you hit the-
Can you say that again? Because there's some confusion because, and this is a big issue, because people will say with all seriousness, we need to stop passing levies because we need the state to kick in more. Is that a trigger for the state? Do they feel like, you know, Olentangy pays more, so we need to help them and we need to come to their aid? Have you heard that in any of your lobbying endeavors?
It's funny, you brought this up. I actually saw a news story that was shared this week, and I can't remember where Speaker Huffman was quoted. But he said verbatim, schools that do not pass levies essentially are going to be waiting a long time if they think that that's going to cause us to add more funding to help them because they can't pass their own levies. So unequivocally, no.
And you've never told people that, like, you don't have a public conversation with us and then privately you tell people, but seriously, the real deal?
No. No. There's no scenario that I have ever in my career have felt like I've stated that if we continue to fail enough levies, the state will step in because it just won't happen. The only way, but maybe I should qualify. The only way they'll step in is if we go into fiscal caution, watch, or emergency. And that's the kind of step in that isn't, hey, brother, let me help you out. It's, hey, get out of the way, we're taking over.
So when they do step in, is their goal, let me help them figure out how to raise more revenue?
Not necessarily. A levy may be part of it, but if the levy can't or won't pass, the objective is the same, and that is to straighten it out, no matter how deeply the cuts or other program changes have to be.
So they don't necessarily have to buy into the facilitate maximum learning?
No. No, they don't.
And not to belabor at this point, but when you say straighten it out, you mean get to a stable fiscal place, not do the things that we all have grown accustomed to education?
Correct. Strictly from the sense of getting us out of the red and back into the black. That is all essentially the interest is. So from a real estate perspective, we actually have about a 2.94%, if you average out the yellow line, we have an average of about 2.94% per year. Real estate revenue is becoming a larger share, though, of our total revenue. And the spikes that you see in '21, '22 are again, where we would have had our last levy. And the spike in 2025, I'm going to analyze, we had actually, delinquencies are a part of our settlements, when people don't pay their tax bills on time. In a subsequent settlement, when they do finally pay, it comes in as a delinquency payment. And we had an exceptionally large delinquency payment this time. I think probably had something to do with a TIF or something that was in arrears. So I'm going to investigate, but that's why you see the slight blip. Last year was more normal, the year before that, 1.52%, 2.14%. So if you look at those numbers, that can help. I know as everyone drives around, they see all the new property in the district. That is really all that we get the growth off of. But as you can see, that is only equating to 1 and 1/2, 2, 3% per year. It is not what we need to keep up with, the growth that we have. So this is a very busy slide. I kind of wanted it all to be there, but I'm going to sum it up to say, now that we're going to switch to the other major revenue source, which is state funding, the as-introduced budget by Governor Dewine's administration keeps the fair school funding formula intact. And so we're happy about that. Unfortunately, it does not change the cost inputs, and it keeps them at the 2022 level. While it keeps the cost inputs at the 2022 level, it unfortunately also, though, recognizes the growth in valuation and incomes, and it rolls that data forward to 2024. And that is very- And that is very negative for us as a district because what that does is dramatically decreases our state funding by making it look like the Olandtangy district has a greater capacity. And where the state recognizes a greater capacity, that means they contribute less. If we look at the amended House substitute bill, we can actually find a few pieces here that are beneficial. Although one of the first things that we'll note is that the House puts the fair school funding formula on hold, kind of, and they introduce a transitional formula. What the transitional formula does is it takes a look at your 2025 base year using the fair school funding formula. They do subtract out supplemental targeted assistance, which we don't get a ton of. Then they're going to run all of the data for fiscal year '26 and '27 through the lens of the fair school funding formula as a starting point. Then they're going to take this, the delta between the fiscal year you're in, in 2025, and give you half the difference. If that difference is zero, you're at least guaranteed what you got in 2025. Does that make sense? They'll do the same thing again in 2027. So-
They may need scratch paper to work on.
I'm trying to just give a rough sketch of kind of the formulas being used, but it's not truly going to go through all of the iterations of what the formula would produce. Although the House has created a version that essentially guarantees every public school district in formula funding, at least what they got in FY '25. The other thing that the formula funding does, and this is very advantageous for Olandtangy schools, is it recognizes growth and we're very thankful for that. In fact, based on estimates, I think we'll get about $150 more per pupil added to our coffers in the '25, '26 school year. And we could actually go as high as $200 per pupil for '26, '27.
Is this what you advocated with our local representative to make that happen?
Very much so, and we are thankful for that. We worked hard. It's not exactly the way-
I should say one of them.
That's correct. It's not exactly the way that we thought about it, but it's, it's got the same spirit involved and we are thankful because we will get at least, we think we'll be in that middle tier. In fact, I'm almost positive, our growth, '22 to '25 or '26, I guess I should say, no, to '25 was about 5.6%, but we think it's going to be a little bit below 5% for the 2027 fiscal year and will allow us maybe to move into that tier where we get $200 per pupil. The state also recognized and just gave a flat $20 per pupil in '26 and $30 per pupil in 2027. So when you put it all together, we can be thankful for the fact that the House's version of the school funding does actually put about $18.7 million more in our coffers than the as-introduced governor's version. So now let's look a little bit about why. If you remember earlier, I talked about the cost sets in the governor's version staying at 2022 levels. Right now in fiscal year 2025, we're getting about $1,430 in base cost funding from the state of Ohio. And that is again determined by factors like costs of teachers and administrators and running programs, but it also is looking at local wealth as measured by the property valuation of the district and district incomes. When you spit it all out, they say that, you know, we have to come up with essentially $6,621 of the 8051. The state gives us 1430. By not moving those cost sets forward, we are being driven to essentially the floor. The state guarantees that you will get at least 10% of the base cost from the state of Ohio. And look at those numbers beginning in FY '26. They're essentially right at $800 per pupil. We are being driven because of those cost sets staying frozen, we're being driven to that level. Now, I kind of wanted to also show for the 2023, '24 school year, just to give everyone an idea of where this all starts. We spent about $16,000 per pupil. The state average across the state of Ohio, as you can see, is $16,311. That's the state average. That's schools that are much, much smaller than us for the most part. The state, or the average for districts that are similar to us is $16,610. So right away you can see that the average cost of educating a student in the state of Ohio is twice, even if the state's share was 100% of the base cost. Now, to be fair, the state never said that they would take care of 100% of school costs, no matter what your view might be on DeRolf or any of the lawsuits against the state for an unequal taxing system that's based on property values. But right from the start, if you then say that we get 10% of that 800, the contribution from the state for a education in Olandtangy schools is about $800, starting next year on about $16,000. And the rest has to come from local property taxes.
Even if we don't approve levies?
Even if we don't approve levies, that's correct. And that'll be especially, remember that statement about the rest comes from local property taxes when we get to the clawback. If you look at amended House Bill 96, it will increase our funding, as mentioned, by about $18.6 or $18.7 million. It's about $8.6 million more than if we were to just take fiscal year 2025 and freeze it, if that makes sense. But if we compare it to the as-introduced governor's budget, it's almost $19 million better. Now a quick run-through on expenses. As a district, our historical average increase in expenses has been about 8.54%. And when I say historical, the last four completed fiscal years. We're expected to increase by about 8.18% moving forward. Remember when we said four or five slides ago, what our average increase in revenue is each year? It was about, I want to say, 1.59% as expenses are averaging about 8.54%. If you look at the charts on the left, salaries plus benefits are almost 84 or 85% of what we do as a district. We are driven as a government service entity by personnel costs. So there's that increase in year-over-year expenses. If you average it moving forward, that is an average of 8.18% year-over-year. And it's being driven by the need to add staff, which we'll see in a couple of slides. The spike in 2024, we would have opened Berlin Middle School. And certainly when schools open, we know we have additional costs. We also continue to have to add costs to take care of students that we educate gladly, but students who need additional services in either special education, EL, gifted. Everyone's child matters in our district. So on the personnel expenses side, we're going to grow by about 7.85% moving forward. That's kind of that average if you look at the '26, '27, '28, '29. They're going to remain our largest portion of our expenses and they're going to remain that way because district enrollment continues to drive up salary costs. Pretty direct correlation. So what-
Sorry, on the personnel costs, this is like, it's not, it's, there's new store and same store, right? So you've got increase on the base, but also adding staff. So when you look at the percentage, it seems high. It's because you're adding staff.
That's correct. And this next slide was an attempt to kind of show that. We sort of tried to pull apart. At the top, we know the portion of the salaries that are going to be attributable to our negotiated increases. And we have the luxury of having, and I say luxury with the whole clawback thing in the back of my mind. We at least have the luxury of having known costs because we've settled with all of our bargaining units, at least through the '27, '28 school year. The only number that it right now is an estimate is the '28, '29. We also know historically what steps or increases in experience cost us. And so that's the chart at the top. But then we pulled it apart at the bottom so we can see the base changes, the steps and the growth. And what Mr. O'Brien was noting is that someone who is a new dollar in 2026, then when their increases go up, it causes the base to grow when base changes are added because they're no longer new in that year, if that makes sense. But if you just take the growth changes, I want to, I want to say that the chair of our finance and audit committee added it up. There's over $61 million of additional salary dedicated to the growth that we know is coming in this district. I don't know of any other district across the state of Ohio that's even remotely close to that. Not even close. $61 million over five years, and that's not even adding on top of that, the 16% roughly in benefits, and that's salary-driven benefits like STRS, SIRS or Medicare. And then we have an expected value of around $15,000 per employee for what their total insurance cost would be. Some people pick high deductible families, some people pick PPO, some people don't pick any. We create an expected value and that's what we use and apply that to every staff member.
Which I think it's tough for people to sort of understand why that's growing so much. We talk about our growth, right? We're getting 500 new students a year, give or take, right? And our elementary schools are 650 or so. So we're almost adding an elementary school every single year in terms of students, right? You can't just say, well, you know, we'll hire one new teacher for 500 new students, right?
That's correct.
That's where it comes in. And we've been adding 500 students every year for the past 10 years. We're supposed to add them every year for the next 10 years. When that happens, to have the type of experience that frankly, to have any type of experience whatsoever, you have to have enough people to keep up with it.
And that's what this chart shows exactly.
We're the second largest employer in Delaware County, is that correct?
That's correct. I think Chase is the only one that's bigger. Just through 2029, and you can see I've carried it all the way out to 2031, but if I'm just looking at the five-year cycle, that's 2,155 students that we expect to grow by. That equates to 158 teachers, 107 classified staff, 37 administrators. That's, that's over 300 new staff members by the '28, '29 school year. Employee benefits, kind of the same scenario. They're about 20% of total costs. As we mentioned earlier, if you add it with salaries, we are a personnel-driven business. It's over 80% of what we do. We continue to do everything we can to keep our healthcare costs in check. And I think that we do. The increases that you see driven are the fact that new employees mean new costs for benefits. It's, it's just a natural progression. Same, it mirrors almost exactly, if you remember, salaries are going up 7.94%. Benefits will be going up about 8%. And this is all benefits, so this just wouldn't be insurance. It would also be retirement, Medicare, workers' comp, anything that is a fringe benefit. So if we look at an abbreviated forecast, and this is just trying to distill it all down, what we're actually going to submit is the as-introduced or governor's budget version because that's what's in law. It's not just because I want to be super conservative, even though it is the more conservative approach. What is in law would be the governor's version of the budget. But you can see that we would add between 20 and 25 days of operating cash, four to five years out with the bottom version, which is the increased state funding. Now I'll call everyone's attention to the line, revenue surplus or deficit, because we're getting ready now to talk about the clawback. We already know that we are spending down our cash reserves as we grow and we're forecasted to spend them down at a more rapid rate moving forward because a typical levy cycle is a levy gets approved. We saw those spikes earlier in real estate. And then you slowly absorb that until the next levy cycle, which we hope as a school district lasts four to five years. If we can get six to seven, we're over the moon happy. So that is the normal for a growing school above the 20 mil floor. That is the normal cycle. And I understand that there are some folks that feel like that is, you know, very fatiguing to know that the school is going to be back every four to five years because of growth and because so many folks want to locate in such a high functioning community that offers a lot of great services, most especially at schools.
Is it fair to say that schools that typically don't have a lot of levies don't have a lot of growth?
That is correct. I am originally from an area of Ohio, southeast Ohio, where things are pretty much the same every year. And the schools don't grow, but there's also no growth in economic viability. There's no growth in jobs. It's a wonderful place to live. I'm not knocking it. But it is not at all a robust, growing type of environment. That's correct.
So it's important to look at that in this. If this is what our finances look like in one of those areas, you could look at the district and say, well, you're mismanaging your money, right? There's, there's a problem with what you're doing. But as we said earlier, when, when the millage rate's going down is because voters approve a specific amount of money when they pass a levy. And that's all that we can collect over that time based on that.
That's correct.
And as that growth is coming up and up and up, it eats away at it quicker and quicker and quicker. So it's not, this is not a picture of mismanagement when you see red. It's a picture of growth.
That's correct.
Maybe the same thing said a little bit differently, right? If you added up all of the approved levies, the millage of the approved levies were like at 72 mils? Is that right?
Effective or gross?
Gross.
Gross, we're actually at 90.2?
And what's our effective?
Effective is only in total, and remember earlier I said operating, but in total, it's about 51 point something? About half.
About half.
Mm-hmm. And our operating-
This mill, this, what we're actually collecting is really half of-
Correct.
What we had to put on the-
And that's the additive effect of House Bill 920 since the late 1970s. That's correct. So now the clawback. So the House decided, I'm not sure it was in the omnibus, but it was close. It might've been, I think April 1st, they weren't necessarily taking omnibus at that point in time. But that's when it first appeared. And it proposes to put in Ohio revised code 5705.316. And I reread it just to be sure. This provision is only for exempted local and city school districts, public schools. It does not affect private schools. It does not affect any type of other government entity. It only impacts public schools. And what this provision is, is doing is purporting to provide property tax relief. And the way that it accomplishes it is it looks at the general fund balance for public schools across the state of Ohio. If those public schools have a carryover cash reserve and that carryover cash reserve is, the percentage would be the amount of reserve as a percent of the most recently completed year's expenses. So if that ratio, when turned into a percent, is higher than 30, the state says that needs to be swept and returned to the taxpayer. And that's exactly how it would work. So dollar for dollar, what you're above, that 30% threshold will be reduced in a subsequent tax bill. And it's going to go into effect if it passes as quickly as the 2025 pay 2026 tax year. So this would impact us beginning in January or February of 2026, next school year. And the way it would work is, in our district's case, for example, the current number that I've estimated is about $83 million is what our reserves exceed the 30% threshold. We're at about 53 to 54% roughly six months. So anything above that 30 would be swept. It's $83 million. So in the tax bills that would be created by the county in the fall of 2025, they would do the calculations to allow, when those tax bills go out to our property owners- do the calculations to allow, when those tax bills go out to our property owners and our residents, they would reduce the tax rates to where all $83 million of that just wouldn't be collected from our constituents during that 25 pay 26 year. To give you an example, our most recent settlement that we just booked towards the end of March, and this is the general fund, we had about $110 to $115 million property tax settlement. $83 million would almost wipe out one-half of a settlement.
Can I ask a couple of questions about that? The money you're talking about that they're clawing back? I mean, is that money just unspoken for? It's just, you got a safe in your office and it's just sitting there in case a bus breaks down? I mean, what, what is that money? That's unallocated money, right? We don't have any plans for that anyway, right?
So part of the reason, hopefully, we've crescendoed to, with all the things we've showed earlier, we have a plan for every dollar. We know we're growing. We're adding 2,100 students. We've got our bargaining agreements already figured into our five-year plan, facilities plans. We have, if you ask me, and I'd say this with a straight face, we have a plan for every dollar to provide a high-quality education for the students of this district. It's not just sitting around, and as you see a couple of slides back, we're forecasting that we will be exhausting and using that cash balance moving forward because our last levy was in May of 2020. So.
So on the clawback, so if we're at, say, 59%, and they want to cut us to 30, and Orange Township's at 288, City of Powell's at 220, Liberty Township's at 95, who's to say they won't be next if this clawback is successful?
You know, they might be. The only thing that I've heard that would make me think they might not be next, and for, for their sake, I hope that that's not the case, 70% of most tax, you know, of the portion of most tax bills is from a school. So I believe that it is, and no disrespect to whoever at the State House put this little gem in the bill, I just believe it's, it's not, the immediate bang for your buck of tax relief that you could deliver on a promise that you provided tax relief will be short-lived in this district because we'll be back on the ballot constantly. Because you can, if you think about it, you can never go above 30%, so you'll have to target your levies to allow you to get by about every one to two years.
So, you know, you say that 70% or so is, is from school districts. Why is that?
School districts provide some of the widest services to, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Like, it was rhetorical, sorry.
Oh. I thought, okay.
It, it is because the state isn't expending their funds. It's because they're shifting it onto the local taxpayer, and not just now, but for years and years and years. The reason local property taxes become 70% of this is because the state has said, we're not funding it, right? And so you all in Tangi, you have to fund it. And what has our district done? They funded it.
Every time.
Every time. I mean, we failed the last slide, I get it, right? But years and years and years, our community has stepped up and done it. And now it is, we're going to take that money away. Not just the money that the state is funding, but the state, the amount that the local community is funding. So this goes to an issue that we talk about a lot, which is that we understand the impact of this on the local community. We understand the burden that comes with local taxpayers having to fund this. It is not because we have said to the state, no, 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 don't give us money, we're, we're going to rely on our local taxpayer. It's because the state has chosen that this is the system that they want to do. And now they've created a problem for themselves because people are upset that they're having to pay so much for good schools, even though, as I said at the outset, good schools are what makes a community. That is the frustrating part of all this, that this is not a one-year problem. This is the result of years of the state choosing to do it this way. And now they realize that people are upset about it, and instead of stepping in to say, all right, well, now we're going to fund the schools a little bit more, we're just going to take that one.
And the premise for the townships and cities is the same as us in terms of why they have a surplus, right? Because they have plans for that surplus.
Correct.
Right? And they just have to raise it now, and then they're going to burn through it, and then it'll be back. I mean, it's, it's the same basic premise, it just shows a lack of understanding of how public finance works out of our legislation.
Well, and one of the most difficult things is, is what we're bringing up is, you know, to, to say to a local school district, step up and do it. And then we step up and do it, and then they turn around and say, oh, okay, now we're going to, now we're going to take that away. Yeah, it, it doesn't, it's not, to me, it's not really thoughtful about the impact of, of what you're doing. It's simply getting a, a quick benefit and not realizing that for a school like Olentangy especially, you're just setting us into a, a financial spiral.
Yeah, and let's be clear about who benefits here. One, you get a slightly reduced tax bill, and the legislators in our State House get to say, hey, everybody, we provided you tax relief. Meanwhile, the school district has to come back year after year asking for the money we need to educate our children at a very high value. Meanwhile, if you pull back to the bigger state budget, you know, show me where you're spending your money, and I'll show you where your priorities are. And a billion dollars of our state taxes are going towards vouchers for private schools. Like, that's, it's showing the legislatures, individual legislators' values when they show what they are voting for.
How would you feel if you were on the school board of Cleveland Municipal and think about the money that that district's going to lose in this clawback, but, you know, the Browns get a new stadium?
Mr. Jenkins, as, as Mr. O'Brien's making comments about our friends in the townships, I'm watching them shake their heads. They're in the same boat, exactly. They've already planned that, they're dealing with growth, they're trying, and, and to their credit, the folks here from Liberty and Township and the City of Powell have always worked hard to make sure that the school district stays whole on anything we're doing to, to move our community forward. So, yeah, I mean, they're looking like, wait a minute, we don't, we don't want to be next too. Don't bring it up. I mean, don't give them any ideas because we've, we've planned, we've budgeted, because the state is putting us in a position where we're going to have to do annual budgets while they're still doing two-year budgets.
Oh, whoa, yeah.
Say that again?
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing a two-year budget, and they're saying, we want you to do a one-year budget, because the comments from the folks that are promoting this are saying, we want the clawback to make you only use reserves to cover your next collection period from the auditor. They don't want you to plan for the future, that's their own words. We don't want you to use any reserves to plan beyond what you're getting. And they're saying, well, you're getting an unvoted benefit, not if you're above the floor.
That's correct.
We've already voted for this once, so they want you to go back more than once to get, so it's, here's your levy, which is a difficult process, it's difficult decisions that everybody has to make. And then they're saying, are you really sure you want to do it? Do it again next year.
And it, and it costs us to go on the ballot. I mean, there's a, there's a huge expense just involved with making that decision, too. Well, and then, you know, when, when Representative Lorenz was here a few meetings ago, there was a discussion about this, I think the thing that I always ask, too, is, it's, so if it's, if you don't use it, you lose it. And it really strikes me that that's encouraging really irresponsible spending. Because if we know they're going to take it away, we should just allocate it.
To anything, right?
To anything. Quick, put it here so they don't take it away. Put it there so they don't take it away. Whereas, I think, you know, done an excellent job being transparent with where our money goes and how, how, you know, the five-year forecast shows where it's going in the future.
And you said a minute ago that, you know, this doesn't appear terribly thoughtful. I'm going to do, I'm going to pull a Dabricko here. Surely, they spent an extensive amount of time considering this, evaluating, having public hearings, talking it through, making sure there was proper notice to the state about that, right?
It came out on April 1st. Todd and I joked, Mr. Meyer, sorry, and I joked, that we thought it was April Fool's Day, and they voted on the bill, I think, on April 9th. And so throw a weekend in there, you had, a bill like this comes out, I mean, it takes a full day just to get through it and understand all the little nuggets that are there. So we just got our bearings, I think it was April 1st, was it Tuesday? So we just got our bearings, we just maybe on, on a Thursday started having conversations about, what is this clawback thing? And we immediately did make contact. We tried some different amendments. It was originally 25%, if you remember. We did at least get it to 30, but it was clear that the will was it was not going to be anything like what we need. I mean, common sense tells me, and I know I've got some fellow government folks here, if you have to live off of a real estate settlement, six months at a time, wouldn't basic common sense say you should probably have at least six months put away? This isn't even six months.
Or more than six days' notice. I mean, we send out more notice for a middle school band concert than we got on the clawback.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. It was, it was exciting.
I know you're addressing some of this, and, but we talked about this at the last board meeting as well, that essentially it comes down to, we would have to be on the ballot every year or so, and if a single one of those levies fails, we could be put immediately into fiscal emergency, which would give the state the ability to control the district. And I'm, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but this honestly feels a way almost like, well, how can we exert more of our state control over these local school districts? Here you go, throw them straight into fiscal emergency, and then we can come in and do whatever we want.
And I've said it before, it's undemocratic because we are the elected officials that the community chose, and you'd have people from outside of the community with no vested interest in, in Olentangy making those decisions instead of us.
Well, the crazy thing is, is some of the districts, some of the legislators that have, that have advanced this actually get more from the state than they give. So they depend heavily on state funding, which comes from us because we put in more than we get. And they've advocated, not only do we want your money to help run our district, we want you not to carry over any of your money that you've already voted for. That's who's supporting this. Who's, who's saying, this is, this is great for the districts at 20 mil because it'll, it'll take away your windfall. That doesn't apply to us. And a myriad of other reasons, it doesn't.
You say it like that, it sounds bad.
That's the most disappointing part, is outside of March of 2024, our community has spoken time and time again about the support they have for Olentangy schools. So if any school could make the argument that there's a, there's a reserve there, but the reserve is there to meet the needs that were voted for by the community, and then to just sweep in and say, it's too high, we're, we're taking it away, does not seem to be serving our local community's interests.
In any of the, this is the last question for now. In any of these budget stuff that you've shown us, has the state pulled back on their requirements of us on the unfunded mandates? We just passed last board meeting where they said, you're going to do this for reading, which we're not against, but that costs us money. Have they pulled back any of the administrative, any things that we have to do for the state that costs us money?
No. They, they have, to be fair, attempted to provide subsidies. For example, the high-quality instructional materials, we received a subsidy to cover maybe a third of, of what we ultimately have to spend. The supplementals for the science of reading, they are providing that, that was a line item in the budget bill, but by and large, no. The administrative burdens, the things that we have to do as a district that are required by either them or the feds through them have, have not lessened.
So, and you mentioned the federal, so have our block grants come through from the closure of the Federal Department of Education?
No.
Because I just paid my tax bill with the understanding that that was in existence, but now it's closed, so I didn't know if our block grants came through yet.
No, none of that's happened yet.
Just let me know.
You said the last question, man.
So this provides a look at the clawback. The revenue line is where you would see the adjustment. That revenue line of 328, 416, 041 in fiscal year 2026 is a drop from 365, 562, to 29. And then in the subsequent year, 372, 708, 537, drops to 339, 948, 114. So it's, it's quite literally like a cleaver, and just whack, it's gone. And you can see our cash balance within two school years has dropped by 160 days. I mean, I don't want to think about this five-year forecast, we, we would almost have to immediately decide how we're going to go back to address this. I mean, to, to prove, I guess, a point I made earlier, this would, in the same cycle where some of these folks would get their tax bills reduced as early as January or February of 2026, we would be strongly considering an operating levy in November of '25 or March or May of 2026.
Does this problem go away if we only do a three-year budget?
No. In fact, I don't know how you would know, and that, that's one of the things in, in saying, oh, that's a good point about five-year planning, we'll just make it three. That was the most absurd thing I've ever heard. When we, because we originally brought up, wait a second, we're planning five years out, and I guess we thought there might be a thoughtful discussion on, you make a good, but it was just, oh, we'll, we'll cut it to three.
So for the record, the House voted to switch from a five-year forecast to a three-year. So for their, from their perspective, they think that's the best idea?
Well, they passed it, you know. So here are some of the effects we've already talked about on the ballot practically every year. Levy asks would have to be smaller because it would do no good. It just gets swept. So we'll be going back to our voters, we think, pretty frequently. I mean, if four to five years is too much between cycles, what, what would one or two, two to three? Then if our operating deficit, which is defined, got some clarity from the High Department of Education, kind of blows my mind. Operating deficit, to me, means your expenses are greater than your revenues. You might still have some cash, but you are on a slippery slope because you're spending more than you're bringing in. No, to the Department of Education and the Auditor of State, it, it means that at the end of a fiscal year, you are completely out of cash, which I, I can't get my head around how you would operate, how that would even work. They would almost have to come in with some sort of solvency assistance immediately. But based on the pathway that we would be, we would still be, regardless of, of that change, we would be in that boat within a couple of years at, at most. When you're in fiscal emergency, there are folks appointed by OBM and the High Department of Education as ex officio members, and then they do appoint three members from the community, one by the governor, one by the director of ODEW, and the other, most likely by the county auditor. Reason I put most likely is it's the mayor of the city in your district that has the largest number of students, unless the county surrounding that city has more students than the city would. And I don't think that most of the students in this district live within the corporate limits of Powell or Delaware. So I believe the county would win out, and that's why I think the auditor would make that appointment.
And any prerequisites of who these community members might need to be, or their qualifications, or?
The law says they're supposed to be experts in financial matters.
Just one other thing I wanted to.
None of our legislators.
But, you know, we also said if we were doing this basically every year levy, if one failed, we'd be in big trouble.
That's correct.
Right? The, I'm not going to say what the board would do in that situation, right? But the prudent thing is not to maintain higher levels of expenses because you've got to prepare in case it fails. So we're talking about a very different Olentangy because we have to mitigate that risk. We're not going to, all of the sorts of services, you'd have to scale that back in the eventuality of failure, because you don't want to just go up and down, up and down, up and down. We're hiring a bunch of English language support, we're dropping them, we're hiring a bunch of social, we're dropping them, right?
That's correct.
It would have to look a lot different so that we're, we're addressing that. We're talking about a very different school district immediately.
Yeah, I, I don't like some of the buzzwords that float around now, but it would be a new normal.
Yeah.
So in the spirit of Teacher Appreciation Week, would we be able to do multi-year contracts?
It would be very challenging. I mean, it, it's incumbent upon me to be able to certify a contract. And what I mean by certify is I have to state that I believe that we have the revenue to cover that contract. Well, first of all, if we're only doing a three-year forecast, that makes things tougher. And then if I'm looking at such volatility in our revenues and expenses, yeah, my comfort zone's going to be, well... our revenues and expenses, yeah, my comfort zone's going to be, we'll, we'll just have to bargain every year.
Again, if you're a private employer, you've got different means of creating short-term credit and liquidity that we're not offering. We can't just go to the bank and line of credit.
That's correct.
Right? To, to carry us through some cash flow needs. And so, surplus has in essence given us that liquidity and buffer for unknowns that they're going to take away.
Yeah, when I mentioned the last board meeting, it's ironic that the Ohio Auditor of State's financial benchmark dashboard is, is going to be created. And I think I heard in the testimony that I listened to briefly yesterday from the Alliance for High Quality Education, they ran a few schools through that model post-clawback. And I want to say it made every last one of them all yellow lights and red lights, which they use as traditional, you know, green, yellow, red. I know it put us in yellow and red. The other one we haven't talked about, we have a AAA bond rating. A provision or a law like this would cause S&amp;P and Moody's to probably drop us like a hot potato and, and just say, hey, you know, we, we can't, we can't give that kind of rating to a district. One of the biggest things they look at is your cash solvency.
What would that do for our borrowing costs?
Make them go up. Yep. Make them go up quite a bit in some cases, depending on where that shook out as to what our rating would be. So-
I'm just a simple country lawyer here. I don't understand bond raises. Surely, they give that to every public school district.
No.
Right? I mean, it's years-
AAA is the gold standard.
Right. It's years of good fiscal management that gets us there.
Correct. So, this last slide kind of wraps up what you were saying, Mr. Lester, is, you know, we've had levies that have been approved by our taxpayers to fund our highly successful public schools. But if we go into fiscal emergency, or even if we can spare fiscal emergency, but we have the clawback as the specter kind of over our heads, we will not, in my opinion, have the same Olentangy schools. I just don't see that that could be a reality. We'll, we'll certainly have to think really, really hard about how we could create that level with, with this type of constraint thrown on our operations. You know, maybe a district that's at the 20 mil floor because they'll get another quote-unquote windfall. I hate to call it that, but you know, the next time there's a 10 or 15% increase because they're at the 20 mil floor, yeah, their, their levies don't reduce. But we're above it. Now, the clawback completely ignores the 20 mil floor as well. So, if you have a district that's at the 20 mil floor and they go above 30%, the clawback wrecks that as well. But, you know, who knows where this ends up? But, but I wonder if this was a type of reaction, because about half of Ohio schools are on the 20 mil floor. And what I can say is that those districts, if you just think about the mechanics of multiplying two numbers, if you multiply two numbers and one of those numbers, one of the factors goes up by 20%, the product goes up by 20%. That is not Olentangy's case. When one of the factors goes up by 20, we've seen the other drops by 20 so that we don't get a windfall. Questions?
Very thorough.
Yeah. And, and I do want to point out, and we've been promoting call to action from our district staff and our community, and there still is time. So, right now, this sits in the Senate. Mr. Jenkins and I will be down to testify with the Senate Education Committee next week. But we're going to, we'll pull back up to the front of our website, but it's on our website, and it's, we have it all laid out for anyone to contact our state legislators, whether it's by phone call or a script to attach an email to send. Because they're hearing about it from across the state. And we need to continue to tell our story and to advocate for Olentangy schools. And, and really, at the end of the day, this clawback needs to be removed.
Yeah. Board members, you have a draft copy of kind of where our testimony is right now. We're limited to three to five minutes on what we read, but we can provide, if a picture's worth a thousand words, then charts to me are worth a million. So, we've got some charts there. But that is, at this point in time, what we are thinking that we'll talk about with the Senate Education Committee next week. And President of the Senate Education Committee is Mr. Brenner, who obviously represents our, our district and our region.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
There are no participation forms from anybody.
Okay.
Unless someone wants to- Yeah. Would you please, I- That's fine. Yeah. What's your name, sir?
Lars, Lars Berg.
Lars Berg?
This is just brief, and I'm still new, but I'm just a parent, and my son goes to Liberty Middle. So, one of the things that I noticed is you have a, a, a large amount of kids who are gifted. So, you've got 60% of the kids who are gifted. What, let's just say that the next high school, and I don't even know if this can be done, what if the next high school that's put together, or the next slew of schools are put together, is dedicated for these kids? Because some of these kids can actually start a college curriculum. Let's just say 40% of that, 60%, which is 24% of all the kids can actually start a college curriculum in high school. Wouldn't that incentivize some of these other universities to throw money at the district? I don't know. But this might be an idea, and maybe that would make up some of the extra revenue and money that you guys are actually looking for. Maybe that would help. I don't know. I'm still new. But I've been hearing, and when I heard that number, 60%, I was like, I can't, I can't believe it. But my, I've seen my son and some of his friends and how they interact, and I know that these kids are that smart. So, maybe this could be a way to subsidize that difference and make up for these problems. I don't know. So, I wasn't prepared to, I just was just going to raise my hand and sit and talk.
You didn't bring charts or anything?
I'm sorry.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for being here. I think at, at some point, all of us were that parent in the audience, saying, this is our first meeting. We have no clue how they got to all of us.
I just didn't know. Maybe that would be something to explore because you would maybe have like these higher level, some of these kids could actually start and go through a college curriculum, starting in ninth grade. And I'm thinking maybe not 24%, but maybe it's 18 or 20.
Yeah.
But that amount could, because you're talking about 2,100 people.
Yeah.
So, maybe that's that number right there. I don't know.
I think, so, first of all, really appreciate you standing up and being thoughtful about this. And this is, as Ms. Schreiber said, you know, a big part of what we try and do is engage with the community to talk about this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and be part of these ongoing discussions. And there's a lot of ways that we go about doing it. One of the things to keep in mind around the next high school is, we had on the last year's levy to build new schools that failed. We're not able to build schools until a new levy passes.
Okay.
Right? So, that, that's part of what we've got to do. Also, school attendance is really determined on where you live, right? So, busing and other things like that. So, there's things that go in there. But the ideas of like how you go about structuring schools, how you go about curriculum, and how that creates partnerships, those are things that we're very much thinking of, right? So, I'd be happy to continue the discussion as we go through it. It, it is a really, I think what you've probably heard tonight is, it's a really complicated issue.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's been, there, there are a lot of factors, and so it's a lot of moving parts in it. But we're always happy to talk through some of those things. So, first of all, really appreciate you coming.
It was just an idea. I didn't even know if it was a possibility, but I was like, maybe this could be something. And then people could have conversations with these universities. Like MIT would be like, oh, yeah, we'll throw money. These kids are brilliant, so.
Take it.
Yeah. Working, working at a university, I, I, I know that they sort, they have some of their own funding issues right now. It's just kind of part of a, a bigger question about public education too, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but yeah, I mean, there's always, there's always ideas to work through some of this stuff. So, appreciate it. Happy to talk after the meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks so much for coming.
Very nice meeting you guys.
Thank you for coming. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gordon, you have the next discussion item on Shanahan.
I do, and I will be fairly quick. The project that you're approving tonight is a partial restroom renovation at Shanahan Middle School. This was bid publicly for approximately $154,000 coming in. As a reminder, in January, when I gave an update on capital improvements, one of the things that we spent a little bit of time on was Shanahan and work that we were doing there. So, this is part of some of those projects I spoke about that day. In March, you approved a flooring bid as well. That was for $141,000. And that is the hallways throughout the building to fix the flooring there, replace the flooring. And the restroom renovation, over the winter, we also put in the digital sign, replaced the sign at Shanahan, had rave reviews over, over that new sign. So, that's, that's good as we continue to make progress there. Other projects that we'll be looking at for next summer, summer of 2026, is the continued phase-in of the restroom renovation. And the reason we're doing the, the phase-in of that, we're continuing to use the building for summer programs. All of our buildings are used extensively for summer programs. So, we're only taking two restrooms out of commission this summer, and while we do the flooring, the next summer, we'll be able to use those two renovated restrooms while we then address some of the other restrooms in the building. So, it's a reason for the phase-in. We'll also do an entry update next summer, as well as we're reviewing some casework and other projects to keep that building updated. As Dr. Dabricko mentioned, the Facilities Committee is looking at the, the long-term future of Shanahan. So, as we continue to work through that, we'll continually evaluate the projects we're doing at Shanahan against the recommendations that, that come out of that committee. Last thing that I always mention is ongoing is always the roofing at Shanahan at a building of, you know, of that age, as we continue to update the roofing. Majority of it was done in 2007, 2006, 2007. So, we're at that cycle where we're doing a lot of roofing annually at Shanahan as well. Are there any questions?
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Again, just, just to be clear, we're not adding any bathrooms or changing the nature of any bathrooms, just updating the bathroom.
Correct. We are, we are updating restrooms similar. At Olentangy High School, we've done several restrooms there. And the, the biggest reason those restrooms were done, maybe a little bit sooner than at Shanahan, is a portion of that building was done in drywall. And drywall does in farewell in restrooms. So, we've done some tile work and other things at Olentangy High School. It would be those type of things, changing out the stall, partitions, flooring, and tile work.
Thank you. And I'll just note on this, because we get questions about Shanahan a lot, right? It's our oldest building in the district. It's been around for a long time, and we understand that. There are different things that can happen, but that, you can tear down and build a brand-new building, right? I mean, that, that's, that's an option. That costs a lot of money, right? And so, part of the challenge, when we know that the state is not funding us the way we are, is we have to be thoughtful of what the community's needs are, and trying to be responsible with that stuff and stretch the dollars. That, that makes hard decisions. You've got to, you've got to sort of do this. I think the goal is to make sure that Shanahan is still a great place to be. We're still up to date as best we can. But we're also trying to be as fiscally conservative as we could possibly be with the community's funds, recognizing the burden of taxes, property taxes that are coming, you know, from the state not fully funding.
Yeah. And absolutely, and that's part of the discussion we're, we're having at the Facilities Committee for a future date. But that's one of the things that has been ongoing, is we've done renovations at Shanahan over the years, is we always are in need of other schools. So, when we go on the ballot to pass funding, it's, there's always priorities of, of, I always call it putting butts in seats anew when we look at priorities for furniture. So, we always make sure we add, the first part of our furniture budget goes towards outfitting additional students in a building. Then we look at replacements. Then we look at, I would like to haves in my, in my, and it's the same thing. We evaluate buildings. We go on to levies. You know, we've got to make sure we've got seats for new students. And the Shanahan becomes a renovation at some point. Of course, we'll look at long-term, and that's what the Facilities Committee's doing now, the long-term viability of that, and what we continue to do. But it's always competing with the need for additional space as opposed to replacing existing space.
Right. It just becomes an issue. If we could be chasing the newest thing in every building every single year, and our cost per pupil would go through the roof, and that would mean millions of more dollars that the community has to come up with. So, it's trying to strike that balance of, of keeping that as low. And that's a form of property tax relief in and of itself.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
All right. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda, we're, we're moving toward the end here for, for all of our guests. I know it's been a, a action-packed meeting, is a board action item, a motion to direct public notice and to provide such notice on intent to retire pending rehire of the superintendent. So, the motion that we're presenting here to come forward is to authorize the treasurer to put a notice in the Delaware Gazette as no later than tomorrow, and to provide such notice to all individuals who have requested sunshine notices of board meetings, which reads substantially as follows. Public notice, the Olentangy Local School District Board of Education hereby gives public notice in accordance with Section 3307.353 of the Ohio Revised Code that Todd Meyer, who's considering retiring from his position as superintendent at the end of the day on July 31, 2025, and is seeking reemployment with the Olentangy Local School District in the same position following his service retirement. The board is considering reemploying Mr. Meyer as superintendent and will hold a public meeting with respect to Mr. Meyer's proposed reemployment at a meeting to be held on June 12, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Berlin Room, which is here, located in the Olentangy Administration of Officers. So, in other words, this would be us having a hearing where we would be discussing whether to permit what, what's known as a rehire, a retire-rehire that would be discussed at the June, it's not our next board meeting, it'd be two board meetings, that we would consider whether we would go down that path with Mr. Meyer. But that's what we have to do by law, have to put a public notice in. So, that's the motion that we're putting forward here. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, just to note, so we will discuss that more fully at a June meeting. All right. Mr. Hearing none. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
All right. We will now move on to our treasurer consent action item, or just, I guess, one treasurer action item.
Easy night. Minutes from April 25th. I would say that you could pull them out and vote separately, but it's the only one?
Only one. All right. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those are reluctant seconds. All right. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Meyer, the superintendent consent action items.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Board members, I recommend approval of the following superintendent consent action items, A through I. A, specific human resource items administrative. B, specific human resource items certified staff. C, specific human resource items supplementals. D, specific human resource items classified. E, specific human resource items classified substitutes. F, approval of students for early graduation. G, approve middle school strings fee correction. H, approve the resolution authorizing continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the '25-'26 school year. And then I, business management and facility items. I'm asking you to approve these items by one single action and vote, unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
And I'll just note for that, that the, the fee correction is something we approved at a prior board meeting, but the, the, there's a cost of a book that we're just-
Correct.
We, we have the, the correct cost of the book that we have to update. And then the business manager and facilities items is both impractical transportation, which we do regularly, and then the, the things that Mr. Gordon did. So, with that, may I entertain a motion to approve those, or I should, sorry. Does anybody want to pull any of those out separately to discuss? Not even the strings. Okay, good. All right. Can I entertain a motion to approve that as one slate of consent action items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Jenkins.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right. We adjourned. Thank you.